For eight years and um always happy to do ethics especially in front of uh board attorneys that's all always fun. Um would you be able to watch? Thank you very much. So uh I know that we do have a packed agenda tonight so I'm just gonna dive right in there um. The presentation is really meant to give board members some um really sort of uh current information about the latest advisories and commissioner decisions on ethics issues that affect board members. Um but this starts with a little bit of background and uh of course it all begins with the School Ethics Act which was passed in nineteen ninety two. And it said that it was essential for administrators and local boards of education members to hold respect and confidence of the people they were serving. It also went on to say that administrators and board members need to avoid conduct in violation of the public trust or that might give a justifiable impression that the public trust is being violated and we'll talk about that concept of the justifiable impression as we move forward. The act established the School Ethics Commission which is a body that oversees uh individual board member ethics violations and also issues advisories. We'll talk about that later as well. Um it also helped define prohibited acts which are formerly uh commonly known as conflicts of interest. Um it established the mandatory training requirements for board members. We'll talk about that as well. Um the Code of Ethics came about two thousand and one, nine years later and was actually based upon a code of ethics that NJSPA members adopted for themselves in mid seventies. And then finally the need for disclosure statements um personal relative and relative and financial disclosure statements are required by school officials on an annual basis and we'll talk about those as well. So uh the question comes up uh especially when it comes to the term school officials. What constitutes a school official? Um and what parts of the act are applicable to each of those um uh members of the school officials group? So we start with um the prohibited acts or conflicts of interest and disclosure statements. Those apply to all school officials. So that would be board members or charter school trustees. It would also be NJSPA stack officers so I in fact have to fill one out every year myself. And then finally um Board of Education members of course, or excuse me administrators of course. Um and then when it comes to the Code of Ethics and mandatory training requirements, those are provisions that apply only to Board of Education members and charter school trustees. As we mentioned, um the School Ethics Commission is the body that enforces the act. It's a nine-member body that is appointed by the governor for a period of three years each, maximum of five from any one political party. It's always five non-school officials, two school board members, two school administrators. It's important to note that this body isn't always fully staffed and that is important when it comes to the next slide. We look at the types of output that the S E C has. They work in two major areas. The first is advisory opinions. These are requested by a school official and they are to determine whether proposed conduct might be in violation of the code or the act. And you see the uh yellow note at the bottom of the of the uh left side of the slide. It says those can be made public, but you need six votes from the S E C and that is irrespective of whether or not there are actually six members on the S E C. So excuse me, at times in the past we have been down to five seated members and therefore none of those advisory opinions could be made public. And then once they got up um to staff and they were able to make things public, of course they made them public en masse. And we were scrambling to figure out ways to stay compliant with all of those um advisories so uh important that that stay staffed. The next um sort of area of work that the S E C uh takes part in is the ethics complaints. Uh in contrast to advisory opinions which can only be requested by a school official, anyone can file an ethics complaint against a school official. That would be board member against board member or a member of the public against a board member or an administrator against a board member. All of those um things can and do happen. And just to give you a sense of the volume that the S E C deals with on an annual basis, there's typically eighty five ethics complaints filed and thirty five advisory opinions requested. We talked about the mandatory training requirement a little bit earlier and um this is where a significant change has happened in the last year. Uh not surprisingly, um the mandatory training uh segments are known as governance one, two, three, and four. Governance one, two, and three happened in the first three years of service of a board member. Governance one um just in the last year has been required within the first ninety days of a board member's service. That's a big change. Prior years it was a full year you had to do that training. Governance one is of course important because it gives you all of the basic skills and knowledge you need, touches upon all major things that a board member has to deal with such as Q S A, H I B, C S A evaluation, open public meetings, and the Code of Ethics. Within the second year of service, a board member has to take governance two, which uh the major subjects are finance and labor, so that would be negotiations type issues. By the end of year three, uh there's a student achievement segment that has to happen. And then every sub- at the first year of every subsequent term, a board member has to take governance four, which is essentially a legal update. NJSPA is the only provider of this training and uh there are multiple options for you to take this training. We of course recommend the in-person. It gives you a much better experience. You can have um small group discussion. You can examine issues in depth. Uh it's just a much more beneficial um environment and one should take it. There's also a live virtual option which we developed actually during the pandemic to help board members meet this obligation. It should be noted that that is given in uh usually three night segments and if you miss any of those nights, you will not get credit for that. So you do have to be diligent in keeping up with the schedule for live virtual. And the last piece is self-paced online. It is um sort of uh the bare minimum if you will for meeting your obligation under the acts. Disclosure statements, um these personal slash relative and financial disclosure statements are basically a way that um you declare whether or not you have a conflict within your district in terms of someone being related to you, working in the district as well and uh whether or not you have any financial involvement with the district. New school officials need to do this within thirty days of employment or taking office. Returning school officials have an April thirtieth deadline to fill out your disclosure statements and you will get a number of reminders if you have not done that, both from us and from your B A. We talked about penalties. If there has been a finding um of a violation of the act, there's a series of penalties that can be assessed depending on the the nature of the violation. Um starting with the least serious, you have a reprimand. This is something that the S E C would recommend to the commissioner and the commissioner would impose. A reprimand is basically a rebuke by the commissioner and it pretty much ends there. The next one up in terms of severity is a censure. A censure is once again a formal written um note of disapproval by the commissioner but is also publicized by the adoption of a public resolution. The next two in severity um are pretty self-explanatory. The first is a suspension and that means that a board member will be barred from any involvement in board activity for a designated period of time, typically somewhere between thirty and a hundred and eighty days. And then the last one of course is removal and that would be immediate termination for board membership or employment if that person were an administrator. So uh the next series of slides in the interest of time, I'm going to assume that you all read the Code of Ethics at your reorganization meeting, which is what boards typically do. I just wanna point out through the um ten tenets of this of the uh code that underneath it on these slides are the standards, which is the actual language that the S E C is going to examine to see if there's been a violation of any of these um standards so or tenets. So um uh you can see exactly what it is that the S E C is looking for in any particular situation. So zooming through those. There's a a set of cases that we are looking at um this year with our ethics presentation that relate to tenet E, which um cautions board members not to take any private action that may compromise the board. And you can see on these slides that the uh each of them has a citation and that C on the citation means it's been a commissioner's decision. So it's gone through and there has been either a finding of um no violation or some kind of a penalty recommended. So in C ninety eight dash twenty one, a member copied and pasted information from a board email and sent the non-public contents, so executive session material, to township officials. It um of course revealed board's communication and the potential had the potential to compromise the board and the information was considered confidential as the board had not yet voted on its contents. There was a recommended penalty of a reprimand in that case. In C fifty nine dash twenty, a board member sent email from a district account to a political body with the intent and misrepresented a rally that was being taken uh being held at the district. The content did suggest there were political motivations around that and they only invited one side of the people on that issue. Um and of course the problem there is that using board email to engage in political activity can give the impression that those statements were made on behalf of the board and of course that is a violation as well. There was a reprimand issue in that case. C twenty dash twenty, a member on their own began to contact vendors and districts for prices and issues uh relating to moving from MacBooks to Chromebooks as a platform for the district. So of course a board member can express disagreement at a board meeting, but they cannot go out and start to conduct some kind of private investigation and or negotiations to um get pricing. And of course that um was a rather serious penalty. It was issued a censure for that. C eighty eight dash twenty one, uh in this case, a board member used board email to express personal views on mask mandates and encourage action sent it to the state legislature and members of the public. Once again, using board email to state a position out that may not be the position of the board. In addition to trying to take action against something that's been mandated already by the state is a big problem for a board member. So once again, there was a reprimand. C eighty six dash twenty one, in this case there were two incidents, basically um once again using board email. Uh sent a uh an email to the board and an administrative assistant accusing the superintendent of changing the graduation date due to a personal conflict. This same member um was told by the principal that a chorus wouldn't be performing at a particular event, so texted the chorus teacher to find out why. Of course, um going through or passing over the superintendent and trying to get an explanation from a staff member is absolutely not a board member's purview and also um certainly put the employee in an uncomfortable situation and um the S E C said was tantamount to conducting an investigation without referring the incident to the superintendent. The superintendent of course is the person in charge of all personnel functions within the district and board members are not permitted to go around that person. As you can see here, there um there were a number of violations against the code and censures were issued for both incidents. By the way, those parenthetical letters uh correspond to the tenet of the code that was violated. Uh C twenty five dash twenty one, uh a board member met with members to justify actions for a walk-on motion to change a holiday name within the district. This independent action undermined the board's decision-making because of course it's up to the board to publicly discuss and explain the rationale for his actions. It also undermined the administration's authority and put an unnecessary strain on the board's superintendent relationship. A reprimand issued there. And C O four dash twenty, the day after a board president lost the election, he directed the board council to conduct research on another board member and who campaigned against him and took private action and use a position to secure privilege for himself. Once again, uh a number of violations of the A D N F and a censure issued in that case. We talked about uh prohibited acts or conflicts of interest. Um this uh slide basically talks about the fact that board members who have some kind of a um conflict, whether it be within a family member or some kind of a business consideration where they may secure some kind of unwarranted privilege or benefit um or some realize some kind of financial gain, um they are not permitted to have any discussion or any voting on issues of that nature. Uh it's always recommended if word members have a question about whether a conflict that consists with their own personal situation that they consult the board council about that situation. Um there was some discussion about what the difference would be between an abstention and a recusal due to conflict. Um board members do have to make sure that if they had a a conflict, they should recuse themselves and not just abstain from the vote. Um recusing, or excuse me, abstaining doesn't really acknowledge the fact that that conflict exists so if you do have a conflict, make sure you absent yourself from that discussion. Uh relationship definitions, this is important in deciding whether there would be a conflict for a board for a board member or a school official. We talk about the New Jersey Code. We talk about immediate family members. Is basically defined as a spouse, a civil union, a domestic partner, or dependent child residing in the same household. For a relative, there's really quite an exhaustive list, as you can see here. And those are whether related to the individual or the individual's spouse by blood, marriage, or adoption. So that's quite an exhaustive list. And it does pay for board members to periodically take an assessment of whether or not they might have a conflict based on relationships they have in district or potentially in in labor unions depending on the issue. This is actually just a sample of a rather exhaustive list that the that the SEC did to enumerate all of the different relationships that might pose a conflict. So if you want to read the whole list, you can quit on that link. Hiring and personnel. Boards cannot hire a relative of a board member, nor can they hire a relative of the superintendent. Of course, though, board members can run for a seat or candidates can run for a seat in a district in which a relative already works. And also, the board can hire a superintendent into a district where a relative already works. But if that is the case, they can't exercise director authority over that relative. If they're an administrator, they must designate someone else to be their supervisor and evaluator. If it's a board member, a board member can't take part in any employment matters concerning the superintendent or anyone in the chain of command between that relative and the board member. Or excuse me, relative of the superintendent. So and then lastly, of course, if they were looking to replace the superintendent, the board member could not take part in any aspect of that hiring process. When it comes to collective bargaining negotiations, this chart is really pretty, pretty helpful. Looking at the chart, column one describes the relationship to a board member. Column two described or designates that that person is as in a statewide public teachers union. And then the next two columns are participate negotiations, yes or no, vote to ratify the contract, yes or no. So starting with row one, if you're a board member and your spouse, dependent child, child who's not a dependent or a relative, works in the district, you certainly can't participate negotiations or vote on the contract. If yourself, your spouse, or dependent child works out of district in a statewide public teachers union, you may not participate negotiations. But once all negotiations issues are settled, salary guides, et cetera, you may be briefed on it and then vote on the contract. Last row, if your child who's not dependent or a relative works out of district in a statewide public teachers union, you may now participate negotiations as of this advisory in two thousand and seventeen. And you may also vote to ratify the contract. You'll notice the asterisk there on the yeses says absent another conflict. And normally that is something to do with heightened union involvement on the part of that relative. That would mean that they are a building rep, they are on the negotiations team, or they're an officer and they're well called.
Does this have a point of clarification on that slide?
Sure.
Statewide Public Teachers Union.
Yep.
That's New Jersey Statewide Public Teachers Union.
Correct.
Somebody's out of state. Your relative that was out of state in a in a union, that would not be relevant here.
Right. That's correct. This is basically kind of explaining that immediate family member having heightened union involvement that could be an issue in in collective bargaining. There's another advisory that came out in two thousand and eighteen that said endorsement of a candidate by the local or statewide union does not create a per se future conflict. Prior to this, it was pretty much assumed that for a period of time you would be absent from negotiations. I think it was usually a year, if I'm correct. And in this case, they also attached the conditions of a financial contribution having been given and that it is intended to influence the member, which I don't know how that gets determined, but I guess the SEC took that very well. Okay. Some advisory opinions related to conflicts. A ten dash twenty-three, a board member's child worked in the district after care. Supervisor was a teacher who reports to the principal. The question was, was there a conflict there? And the advice was, yes, recuse for any and all matters related to superintendent and the supervisor chain of command. A O two dash twenty-three, spouse was a councilman in the borough. Could that particular board member vote to hire an S R officer? And the advice from the SEC was that there would be a perceived personal or financial involvement that could violate the public confidence. So again, it's that justifiable oppression that the public confidence wasn't being upheld. So that person was advised to recuse for any and all matters related to the borough. C eighty-eight dash twenty-two, wife works in the district, mistakenly voted to renew the CSA's contract in a block of forty-eight items. Now, we already discussed that if your relative worked in the district, you couldn't have any involvement in the superintendent's contract. What's interesting about this one is that that person took the time to abstain from a different item in that forty-eight, forty-eight item block, but didn't abstain from this one. So once again, potential for conflict, a reprimand issued there. And that was a commissioner's case, not an advisory. In A O one dash twenty-three, question was, can a board member continue to work for a food service vendor as a lunch lady in the district? The SEC voted, excuse me, recommended that that person get reassigned within their employer. Reason being that this particular person was in the district for an extended amount of time each day, which would subject that person to supervision from administration and therefore that would be a violation, excuse me, a conflict. A O eight dash twenty-three, town going into a contract with a firm to upgrade tennis courts shared with school district on school grounds. Can the board member's firm be a subcontractor? They say yes, in this case, which I really was quite surprised at. They did attach conditions to that, of course, though, so that they didn't want any preferential treatment given to that board member's firm. They wanted for someone else to actually perform, work rather than the board member. And certainly, the board member could have no authority over staff and needed to keep the superintendent advised all the way. C eighty-one dash twenty, a board member who was also the borough CFO voted to approve a shared service agreement with the borough for maintenance type issues. The SEC, or excuse me, the commissioner said within this that the person had a direct or indirect financial involvement that could be perceived to impair objectivity. A reprimand was recommended there. There's a question about committee assignments when a relative works in district. So in this case, A O five dash twenty-three, a board president had a child who worked in the district. The SEC said that because of that relationship, the board president could not chair, could not appoint chairs, could not appoint members or serve on any committee that might impact that person's employment. And for a second board member in this area, a board member B spouses a ten-month employee in the technology department. And once again, it was said that that board member could not have any involvement on any committees that would remotely touch upon that spouse's employment. Executive session, there was a couple of cases here that resulted in censures. C eighty-seven dash twenty-one, in this case, a member attended an executive session discussion on candidates affiliated board seat. This board member's husband had applied. So it was judged that she shouldn't have been involved in that. In C O nine dash twenty, the board president attended multiple discussions on a matter involving an immediate family member. Other board members weren't aware of the identity, of course. And in both cases, the council was consulted first. There's a number of reasons, of course, why, you know, it was inappropriate for those board members to attend those sessions. Not the least of which is it gives them an advantage and creates the justifiable oppression that the public trust was being violated. This is fairly new, this advice of council defense, just over the last couple of months. We always, of course, refer board members to board council. And in the past, that even if they were advised in a certain direction and took that direction, SEC could still have found them to have violated the Act and imposed a penalty. Lately, though, this has been sort of dialed back a little bit. And they laid out conditions where advice of council defense might help a board member in these cases. And these four conditions that were suggested were that the approval or advice was received prior to action being taken, that the individual who offered the advice possessed authority or responsibility with regard to ethical issues, that the individual seeking the advice or approval made full disclosure of the circumstances involved. And lastly, that the individual complied with the advice that was received, including any restrictions it might contain. If all those factors were met, advice of council could come into play. However, it would probably just help them avoid a penalty. They would still, could still be found to have been violation of the Code of the Act. Volunteering, board members are not prohibited from volunteering in schools. They're also not prohibited from volunteering with other organizations that don't fall underneath the district's umbrella. So you can read into that your PTA's, your booster clubs, et cetera. However, if you are involved with those outside organizations and issues come for the board that might affect those organizations, it's probably a good idea for board members to recuse themselves from those discussions. When it comes to actually being in the schools to do volunteer activity, the the phrase is typically advised by the SEC is that they can be involved in one-time non-executive volunteer activities. And you can infer from that things like reading on Dr. Seuss Day or checking in a class trip, something where you're not going to be there on a consistent basis, where you're not going to be giving direction to staff or taking direction from staff. And won't have you in the building so much that people would mistake you for an employee, right? If you are going to volunteer, advise your superintendent to be in the building. Go in, do your volunteer activity, then leave. It's not an opportunity to check up on things. And then also, of course, you know, be cognizant of all your obligations under the Act. You're a state official, you don't, you're not just a member of the public when you're doing that. Okay. I think the the most important thing on this slide is the bottom piece here, advisory opinion A twelve dash twenty-two. A board member asked if they would violate the Ethics Act if they voted affirmatively to refuse to implement New Jersey student learning standards. Of course, this has been a hot issue for the last couple of years around comprehensive health and P E. What the SEC said was that if it was shown that the school official acted contrary to the laws, rules, and regulations, and if you go back to tenet A of the Code of Ethics, it says you're, you know, you're obligated to enforce the laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education, that you could be in violation of the code. Social media. So generally speaking, you don't give up your First Amendment rights when you become a board member, but you do have additional obligations for the members of the public. So you have to mind the subjects that you talk about if you're going to be on social media. If you want to show pictures of your cat or breakfast cereal, knock yourself out, right? But when you start to talk about things related or could be tied to your board service, then you can easily get yourself off track and in trouble. What the what the SEC recommends is if you're going to be speaking in public, and this is a longstanding rule, and if you were sending a letter to the editor in years past or commenting on social media, the SEC suggests you use a disclaimer. They're also suggesting it be bold and italics. And and that it basically says that you're making those comments in your capacity as a private citizen. They're not representing the board's opinions or any of the individual members on the board and represent your own opinions solely. Now, some questions about this disclaimer that are, you know, very reasonable questions for board members to ask. So if I use a disclaimer, does that automatically protect me? No, it doesn't. It does help clarify your speaking, but it it doesn't, it's not a, you know, a bulletproof vest, if you will, for the things that you say within that statement. What could cause me to be in violation with a disclaimer? It's basically the content. If you have a disclaimer, but you go ahead and say a whole bunch of things that are like flying in the face of that disclaimer, you could still be in trouble. If I don't use a disclaimer, does that mean I'm automatically in violation of the Act? No, once again, the content is really the key thing. And lastly, must I use the exact disclaimer? No, but you really hit all the key points of the disclaimer. So A O two dash twenty-two basically says, if as a private citizen, would they violate the Act if they answered operational questions? And basically, you're not a private citizen when you're speaking on matters of the board. You're perceived to be speaking for the board, or you could be. So basically, no, you shouldn't be answering operational questions. You're not in charge of the operational part of the district. That's your superintendent's job. So this is particularly appropriate for our sort of times, if you will, especially when there's been a lot of turnover on boards of education. Many people, of course, use social media in order to build a case for their election to the board. The SEC is saying it's no longer appropriate to use your campaign page once you become a seated board member. It also says any social, and this is going back to two thousand and fourteen, any social media account that inherently indicates your position as a board member shouldn't be used either. It also says a mere liking or sharing of a social media post wouldn't cause a reasonable member, would not cause a reasonable member of the public to proceed here speaking in your official capacity or pursuant to your official duties as a member of the board. Once again, I think the content is really going to dictate whether or not that could be a problem for you. Use of divisive language. So the SEC talked in the Commissioner's Decision nineteen dash twenty-two about inappropriate language not being something that they could assess penalties against, but they caution board members against using language that what they call derogate from the mission of the board. Right? So they're they're reminding you that you should behave with a certain level of decorum as a board member. And and they also took the time to remind you in C one O two dash twenty-two that you will be subject to your community's judgment at the voting booth should you choose to act in a manner that is contrary to the mission of the board. Couple of quick points, talked about a list of conflicts. Do recommend reviewing regularly. Everybody has, you know, relatives that, you know, entered the teaching profession at some point or another. They graduate in December and May and take a job. And all of a sudden, they're a building rep and you might have an issue. So do do talk about that on a regular basis. Your board attorney, once again, should be the best resource for you to judge whether you have issues ethically or conflicts, et cetera. And school board notes, which you should all receive either in print or in digital form, does have advisory opinions when they're released by the SEC that can help you stay compliant with all of this. And that's it.
Just want to make mention that not only does Matt need to do these presentations, but he is an ongoing resource and center of support for the superintendent all over Bergen County. Matt, thank you for coming on this evening, taking that presentation. Thank you for being there for us and thank everyone at school boards. Thank you very much, Matt.
Okay, good night.
Brings us to our next presentation from our Director of Technology and Innovation, Mr. Pablo San. Brings us to our next presentation from our Director of Technology and Innovation, Mr. Pablo San.
Good evening, everyone. So I just really wanted to go over, give everyone a overview of technology within our district, where we are now, where we come from, and a few things that we've done to get to where we are. So first, I really just wanted to start out to talk about technology briefly. And just, you know, it's always important to kind of focus on why we have technology in our district. So with the support of the Information Technology Services Department, our students and staff will learn, engage, interact, and grow with the use of technology that is integrated into the curriculum. And that's key for us. Our goal is to really support, but also make sure that technology is integrated into our school board. So I wanted to first start with our classrooms and just let everyone know what exactly do our students have in each one of their classrooms that's available to them to support education. So we'll go over the hardware first. Uh students in pre-K through grade one have one-to-one iPad. Students in grade two through grade twelve have one-to-one Chromebooks. That's for all students. Uh teachers have a standard laptop or desktop in each one of their classrooms that is Windows-based. Each one of our parent professionals in the district have a standard Chromebook. And all schools have at least one computer lab. When it comes to software, um we have access to what is called ClassLink. ClassLink um houses our rosters and our instructional software platforms. That's really just how our students get um through our software. We have a total of a hundred applications that our students have access to. That's um applications that directly and indirectly support learning for our students. All schools have one-to-one access points per academic classroom. So um I'll get into access points a little bit later, but basically access points are what gives each one of our classrooms and our students access to the internet. Um and internet protocol, um basically every classroom has a phone in it that is, it's called IP-based, meaning it connects to the internet. I'd like to just go over the infrastructure, the performance, and security of our entire district, but my focus will be on our network backbone. Um our network backbone is basically what makes everything work when it comes to um our databases, our wireless internet, um our fiber, what makes everything work. And I want to give you a good idea of what physical devices are that make that work. So I want to just go back a little bit. Prior to May, um the district in two thousand twenty-one, uh we only received a network upgrade um uh that consisted of the following hardware. It it's a network upgrade, but it's also a data center uh upgrade that we went through. So I won't talk too much about each one of the devices, but I think it's important that you all know, you know, what runs our our district. So two thousand twenty-one, we purchased two district-level firewalls. The firewalls are devices that monitor the traffic that goes back and forth from the internet and from our students and back out. Um the goal is to make sure that inappropriate things don't get in and that inappropriate things don't get out. It monitors it consistently twenty-four seven. Also, um with that purchase, we purchased six M S four twenty-five uh sixteen-port switches. Um really, what this device is, is it sits on the outside, closest to what we call fiber, closest to the internet on the outside, and it helps bring that connect that fiber optic to the internet. And so we also purchased fifty-five M S two fifty. They're forty-eight port switches. In a nutshell, this device really just connects our access points, our servers, other devices like that, to our local internal network. These are spread throughout all of our schools. There's an additional two M S two fifty twenty-four-port switches. It really does the same thing, but it sits a little bit closer to the fiber. The closer you are to the fiber, the faster you are, the further you are from the fiber, the slower, less you are. And then two M S three fifty forty-eight port switches, same thing. There's nothing much to say about that. Um they do pretty much the same thing. Now, here are the access points that we were talking about a little bit earlier. We have two hundred and seventeen access points that are distributed throughout the entire district. Um these access points give access to the internet, give access to our database, and access to our intranet um that's within our our district. We basically have one-to-one access when it comes to our access points in our academic areas and our classrooms. Okay, and then we have, finally, we purchased six Cisco HyperFlex servers. Um there's a lot that goes on in the district when it comes to technology. And um you might think, well, we only have six servers. Well, these servers do a lot. I'm gonna kind of split them in half to kind of briefly explain what's going on with our servers. Uh three of the servers are just dedicated to our databases, to our software, to door access when you swipe a card, to basically everything. Um within those three slim servers that are in our in the racks that we call them, they we have three physical servers, but installed on those three servers, we have thirty-seven servers that are running virtually on those machines that run everything in our district. Uh it has a big deal, does a good job. Now, the other three um servers, we uh they were designed initially to be what's called V D I servers, virtual desktop environment. And they had, what we have done is we've set them up and got them ready to give an environment, a virtual environment, for each one of our students and staff. Uh virtual environment means basically if you can think of getting on your laptop at home or getting on any type of computer, well, we can give that same experience, but remotely anywhere to our students. Okay, so that's what the other three servers are dedicated to doing. And that's up and running consistently in our district. So that's that's our backbone. That's what runs everything. And then I'll dig in a little bit deeper here to explain um what our data network looks like. Okay, so all schools have a network that are that are our mother schools are networked via single-mode fiber. Um to give you a better idea what that means is, if you can think of a loop, um each one of our schools is connected with a fiber optic cable, single-mode fiber, strands of glass, really. Um and light is shot on these cables and it makes the and it, you know, transmits data throughout. It's very fast. And so that's the backbone of our data network. Um all of our buildings communicate with each other using ten gigabit fiber uplink. Really what that means is in each building, there's another cable that connects to the single-mode fiber that allows us to go up to ten gigabits worth of speed. We're not at that speed, but that will allow us to go up to that speed if we so choose. Each one of the devices that I talked to you about, that the students have, that our teacher teachers have, that we use, they have what's called a network adapter. Every single one of our devices has has an adapter installed that is what's called ten by one hundred by one thousand megabits per second. That's just, you know, you don't have to really worry about that. The the easy way to explain that is the ten is slower. We can go slower. We can go in middle speed, which is one hundred, or we can go up to gigabit speeds. We're not there yet, but we have the capability to go gigabit speeds if we choose to. Um every space occupied by staff has at least four data drops. What that really means is every teaching space in our district, and then some, has four cat six category six cables that are in the classroom. So if we need to expand or put in extra devices or connect another smart board or something like that, we have the capability to do that without running extra ones. Um and each of our labs are equipped with a wired wired or wireless computers in every single one of our labs. And I'd like to just step into technology, security, and protection for the, you know, our district. So we have a secured internet connection. Uh we spoke a little bit about the enterprise-level firewalls that we have in the district. Um that's part of our security. Um we have services that are monitored twenty-four hours a day, uh thirty three hundred sixty-five days a year on the monitor of traffic that goes through the firewall um in our district. And if anything, you know, funny happens, you know, we will be alerted to that. In addition to that, the same software does uh intrusion detection, and it reduces our exposure to um bad actors on the internet. Uh we have additional services uh to provide comprehensive suite of unified threat management features. Basically, what that means is we're basically continuously scanning our, not just our file files, but we're scanning our PCs and the Chromebooks just to make sure that nothing is getting out, nothing is getting in. Um our district servers that I spoke about, um they're backed up on premise. What that means is they're backed up here. They're backed up here. All of our data is backed up here on on school property. In addition to that, all of our user data is pushed off premise and backed up by Google in the cloud. Um our servers are protected by what's called a U P S, uninterrupted power supply. So in the event that power goes down in the district, our servers will stay up for a certain amount of time um before they shut down. We do have antivirus software installed in each one of our desktops and laptops and on our servers. Um all of our emails hosted by Google in the cloud. We've been enabled a few different things, anti-spam and other uh security components uh that include data loss prevention for confidential information, uh student information, staff information. And with the assistance of Gmail, we have a lot of filtering that is set up to block spam messages. It doesn't one hundred percent stop spam messages. It just helps to block them. Um and we have security compliance measures in place as well that will archive and preserve our email for a certain retention period, and I'll go into that a little bit more in our next slides. So um within our email, we have things called phishing protections that help protect our students and staff from anyone who's trying to um get into their machines. And it gives us warnings and lets us know, hey, you shouldn't click on this, you shouldn't, you know, click on that or send this out. Um we have proactive alerts for specific attachments. So when attachments are received or sent out, it will warn you uh to be careful if it notices something that isn't safe. Um we also have safe browsing setup for all students and staff. Basically, um if you go to an inappropriate site, it will either block you outright, or if there's something that is strange, it will tell you not to click on those links. Then we have anti-malware. Um and it just protects district email um from inappropriate software. Next, I'd just like to tell you a little bit about our telephone, our intercom, and our um cameras. So our classrooms are equipped with a digital telephone. We spoke about that, an IP-based phone, every single one. Um but also, we have those those telephones have access to what's called an auto speaker. So if I was going to a classroom and I needed to make an emergency announcement, I could make an announcement from any class to everyone in the entire um in that entire school. If I needed to make an emergency lockdown from any phone in the district, I can do that from the IP-based phone. Um if I needed to just push a button in the classroom and automatically notify the police, I can do that just from one of the IP-based phones without dialing an entire number. Um we have what's called nine one one inform, and that is connected. It's basically what I just explained, but it is connected to our phones. You can make an emergency call um with the, you know, just touching a button. What happens is if there's something happening, for example, in room two oh one and the phone um the call is made from two oh one, it would show local police department a map of where the incident is happening specifically in that room, and the law enforcement would be able to respond directly uh to that room. And there's a host of other features that are installed, but mainly that's, you know, what it does. And in addition, our phones connect directly to nine one one services. Like I said, um there's no pushing buttons. You just have to, you know, push one and you can go right in. Um we have a camera system and throughout our entire district and in every school. Each school is equipped with an N V R. Uh it's just a network video camera. It controls uh all of our cameras. It backs up and provides appropriate staff with viewing capabilities to those cameras. Um the N V R really is just a brain um that manages all the cameras that are in the district. So briefly about our camera cover. In A C S here, N S C Scott, we have a total of sixty-three cameras, internal and external. In the middle school, we have a total of seventy-eight cameras, internal and external. And in the only high school, we have a total of ninety-five cameras, internal and external cameras, all controlled by the N V R and all backed up by the N V R and accessible internally and externally uh um from the damn road without our district, outside of our district. Um so what we've what have we accomplished so far? I I won't read all of these um to you. I just wanted to highlight a few different areas that I think are important, and uh I believe this is available to anyone who wants to dig in a little bit deeper. Uh we've done a lot in the time that we we've been here. Uh one of the things I wanted to point out is there's something called a security scorecard. Um when we started looking at security, um security scorecard is basically a report card for how safe your your school is, the internet and the I T. Uh at one point, we had a sixty-three, and we're up to an eighty-eight right now. Um and we believe that we'll get, you know, in the nineties. Some things are out of our control. For example, using Google, Google isn't as hardened as we want Google to be. So that'll take some time to make those changes. Um one of the other things I wanted to highlight is our staff, the I T staff, we have software now that trades us on new technologies that comes out. So we're always on top of technology within the district. Um and that is implemented, you know, for all of our staff, but also we work that into um their observations to make sure that, you know, they're taking the the training. Um just move on here. And that's pretty much it. Uh we've done a lot. It's all listed here. Um I just wanted to point out a few different things that we're doing. So last but not least, I just wanted to focus on um I Ts, uh information technologies, goals and objectives and our strategies here. So goal one, we really want to maintain a technology refresh plan that provides equitable, sustainable, and relevant technology resources for all students and staff. And, you know, the way we're going to do that is ensure a suitable district-wide technology refresh plan is in place, enhance and upgrade technology in all schools annually, and revamp our computer labs to provide a digitally rich environment for students and staff to share and create. We want to install wireless screen mirroring and digital displays in all schools. We really want to focus on replacing six hundred and sixty-two legacy Chromebook devices, old devices, with new uh student Chromebooks. Uh we want to complete class smartboard installations across the district. We started a huge push uh part beginning here, and we're very close to um getting them in every uh location. We want to implement and maintain sustainable digital device platform to address the instructional needs of our students. Um and what I mean by digital device platform is currently we have Chromebooks, and I think we should look into type, you know, look into the data to see if it's important for us to stick with Chromebooks or should we be looking at, you know, something else, maybe laptops? That's all that 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 means, just always being on top of technology and what's best for our students. Um goal two. Um, goal two, innovation tech solution, innovative tech solutions. Our goal there would be to improve productivity of all staff by providing cost-effective and innovative technical solutions. So some of our strategies are, you know, provide seamless access to um applications through ClassLink, Single Sign-On and Genesis SIS database. Basically, make it easy for staff and students to, to log on to these uh, these databases. Um, we'd like to support an instructional technology coach position. So um, we understand the importance of tech, you know, technology in our schools, but we also think it's super important that all of our teachers feel comfortable with the technology that they're using. So we'd like to create um a position that um put a technology coach in each one of the schools to help us out there. We'd like to revamp our computer labs district-wide to foster the use of digital technology for students and staff, um, help them with collaboration and enhance meaningful exploration and creation. And we only have four, you know, we put together four goals. So we're on goal three now and what we'd like to do is provide a safe, secure, consistent and seamless connectivity experience for all users in support of the district's intercasual goals. So some of the strategies here is we'd like to provide enhanced wireless access for all staff and students. Um, and one of the ways that we do that is increase our internet capacity to ten gigabits. Uh, right now, we're on, you know, one gigabit. Implement single sign-on for staff to provide a seamless access um experience to the district resources. It's pretty much what I had mentioned before, we want to make it easier for staff um to really sign on to use the database that we have here. And we'd like to complete a remote VDI infrastructure expansion for all staff and students. Currently, we have that, it's implemented, but it's just for students. We'd like to push that out for staff as well. And we'd like to push it out so it is not just being used on campus, but also being used off campus.
Oh, sorry to interrupt, what's VDI?
I'm sorry, virtual desktop environment. And last, uh, communication system. So our goal is to implement and sustain a modernized communication system infrastructure for all schools. So some of our strategies here are to really implement a centralized staff and student ID badge application for safety, security, transportation, food service and attendance. Now, we're almost there, we've done a lot of work with this, badges are all put together. We just want to make sure that we, um, you know, kind of wrap up that program and make sure that it's running smoothly. We want to install telephone systems in all remaining schools with voice over internet protocol. So like I said, all academic areas have telephone systems. There's some non-academic areas that we'd like to get phones in as well. We'd like to upgrade our public address intercom uh infrastructure. And what that means is, I had mentioned, we have algo speech, uh, speakers around the district. Um, we would like to, um, you know, upgrade them as time goes on, but also make sure that we have full coverage throughout the, the district when it comes to sound. The sound's working great. Um, we'd like to install digital marquee outdoor signs at all schools for communication purposes. And we'd like to install campus-wide physical security, physical security systems. And what I mean by that is we have that in place, but I'd really like to, as time goes on and technology gets older, we'd like to focus on our cameras and our door access systems to make sure that they're up um to date. Um, we want to make sure that they're complying with um all legislative requirements and that they integrate with the existing crisis communication systems that we're currently using or that come out in, in the future. We only want to make sure that everything's integrated and working appropriately. And with that, um, you know, my presentation is done.
Thank you so much, Mr. Samuel, that was your accomplishment. Um, I have, I feel questions, but those are all simple ones, so hopefully, uh. Uh, so at what point, it was um probably early phase of uh the first implementation of our network upgrade. Uh, I remember we were still struggling with the very weak connectivity in, particularly in this building and few spots. Uh, do they still about being a trouble to you or that's all resolved through the work that we've been doing so far?
So, so I would say, I'll, I'll step back, maybe about a year ago, um, we took an inventory, uh, a survey actually of all of our staff members. And that is one of the things that we put on there, it's about connectivity and it scored really high. So I don't hear of many errors or any issues when it comes to connectivity. When it comes to wireless, like Wi-Fi, no issues there. Um, we do get, you know, some complaints about cell phone signals that we do get, but when it comes to the wireless, we have access points everywhere.
That's great, great, um, and uh the network upgrade, that was such a huge project that we undertook and was working through three phases if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Are we through all phases or are we talking about just completed first phase? Where are we in terms of that master plan?
So we're, and the only reason I pause is we're absolutely completed, we're done through all of those phases. But I paused because um VDI was the last phase. Um, VDI when it came on wasn't completed, it is completed now and we just have to push it up. So yes, we, we're definitely there, but I'd like to see all the students and staff working on those VDI virtual desktops, but it is closed out and we're done.
Um, and since now we, we've just completed our upgrade, right? And um AI integrated uh software as an educational tool was kind of emerging topic uh during the School Board Association Conference from, uh, if you know. Um, would that impact us in terms of like our existing infrastructure? Is that going to require us to like be upgraded again or is it too far away? So it, it's not within the horizon or do you have any opinion of that or?
When it comes to AI? Um, the AI that is available to us, um, there's, when people say AI, there's a lot of different uh versions of, of AI. Um, the version of AI that most people know of is what's really popular now when it comes to, you know, writing papers and institutions and things like that. Um, we have the ability to do that now because of web access, so we have access to that now. Um, I would say that interestingly enough, um, when I mentioned that we are, our network is secured um consistently, three hundred and sixty-five um days out of the year, we have a version of AI that watches the data that streams on our networks. We're actually using AI ourselves within IT department to keep us safe. So we have everything we need to move forward if we, if we needed to.
Great, um, the telephone intercom, um, so it's great that it has these all embedded emergency features, um, guessing our staff and students, like they're trained about these features. So when, God forbid, something happens, we actually, you know, get to use those emergency um capabilities.
Yeah, so I can speak to our telephone systems. Our s- um, our administrators and our staff are all trained on that. Um, the stupids aren't necessarily trained just because it's, it's kind of like saying, hey, you can, you have to do is pull this firewall and, you know, so it, it's specific instructions that we, we taught the staff, but not necessarily um the students. This, now this next part is really kind of not in my lane, but I will say that there's consistent drills that are done that do support the students when it comes to what they should know and how to, you know, react and what to do in certain, you know, situations. But technology-wise, that's a, you know, a, a staff victory.
Right, and the camera system, the backup, how long does it last?
So we have the thirty-day retention period.
Thirty days, okay.
Right, so after thirty days, it will start to override itself.
Yeah, just few, few more quick ones, is that okay? Or am I just going crazy? Okay, quickly, quickly. The security scorecard, eighty-eight sounds very impressive, especially what it was before. How does it compare to other clubs?
So it's pretty easy, so the security scorecard will show us how we're doing as compared to other organizations. So we're just above, so most, not, not most, I would say other organizations that are doing what they should do are at pretty much between an eighty-two and an eighty-four. And so, you know, we're doing pretty good, but we could, we could definitely do better, we'd like to do a little better.
Awesome, yeah, and on the smart board, I'm like a little bit um thinking back that we're still installing it. I, I remember there was a big issue with the back order, it wasn't the issue, is that the issue why we're still?
No, I would say that every, every smart board that was supposed to be ordered was ordered. I guess that there's just a few locations that were left out and I think on purpose.
Oh, I see.
And so, um, now the principals have, you know, I've spoken to principals and they've said to me, okay, well, in this computer lab, well, it would be nice to add that there. So I think a few, there's few, I mean really minor, so there's only a few locations that still probably could use them.
Oh, great, last question, marquee signage, right? So how does that compare to the digital signage we have? This is more, I'm sure it's um different ones, right?
It is different, so um currently what we have is what's called a dot matrix, kind of pixelated view of our little dots. So the new signs are more interactive, they can put images on, they're better looking images. Um, and here's the, the most important part for me, uh, from the IT department. Our current signs, when you want to change them, you have to go to them with a laptop, you have to literally get close to them.
No idea.
Yeah, so the newer boards, you could just change them from, you know, within, you could just inside the school, just make a change and it goes out. You have to actually be a part of the, the signs network to actually change it. So, and that's older technology.
Sure, yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hey Pablo, you have a question?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks so much for this, for this presentation, it's very comprehensive.
Please talk.
Just, you mentioned the computer labs a, a few times. Can you give us an idea of what our current resources are in the computer labs and what your planned resources are for those?
Yes, definitely. So right now, I would say that we have enough computers in every lab to house a large classroom. So that might be around thirty computers in a lab. Um, there, and most labs are getting a little bit older, but they're not outdated, but they're getting a little bit older. One of the reasons I really want to focus on the computer labs is for a few reasons, technology and budgetary kind of reasons. So right now, if you purchase a computer for a computer lab, you'll have that computer for a good five years before you have to replace it and it starts to get slow and starts to, you know, get run down. So with the VDI environment that I was, you know, mentioning to you, the virtual desktop environment, what students could do is they could access the power of our servers and all of our software with just their Chromebooks and, and it's a device that they already have. So they could actually go to the computer lab with their Chromebook and do what they have to do and not rely on just the machine that's there that's getting older. Um, they could just use the power of the Chromebook and the virtual desktop um environment. So I think that's one of the areas I'd like to go. So instead of purchasing every year a, you know, a two thousand dollar um machine um times whatever the number is for each one of the labs, the students can have what they're already given, which is a Chromebook and they can have all of that power. So that's one of the views I have for, you know, the, um, the computer lab.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We just, just to clarify, if, if we did go that route where the students use those laptop, we probably should have something a little bit better. I know you mentioned like looking into other things than Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Would you agree? If, if that's what we're going to use in the labs, they're bringing their own?
Um, I do agree to, uh, to a point, but let me just explain what that is.
You're saying a two thousand dollar device and a Chromebook is how much?
So a Chromebook, you can get it for anywhere from two hundred and fifty dollars to maybe four hundred.
It, it, it sounds great, a two hundred and fifty dollars replacing a two thousand dollar, but you probably might need a little bit more.
I agree, and the one thing that you would need a little bit more of is the, the, the screen itself. So they can take advantage of the viewing capabilities, whereas the basic Chromebooks at this point don't have that great screen. But everything on the backend that you're talking about, like everything that they would access, they, so let me give a quick example. With a Chromebook, they are all accessing Google and the internet and that's pretty much the limit. With the VDI environment, there is no limit to the software that they can run. If they're using a Chromebook solely for a Chromebook, I can't give them access to Microsoft, access to Adobe, the very powerful programs that are used like in four-year colleges. But with the VDI environment, I can give them access in practice to all of that. But you're, you're right, it, this should have a better screen.
A little better screen.
And that software in our servers, right?
Correct, correct.
Do we have the servers that we need to?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for um doing the presentation, but also um, I've seen a lot of technology updates over the years, but I, I just really want to commend you for doing a good job at taking it and breaking it down into like what it means on a practical day-to-day basis. Um, because I, I haven't almost seen that, so I just appreciate it. There are, I'm sorry.
You're welcome, thank you.
I will point out that we, we added him all items of how to, and we could have gotten him current. It was a lot, we could have talked about it, and I credit it to Pablo and his department for all the work that they've done. And, you know, it's, it's clear, you can feel the energy with the, with the work that we got, so thank you Pablo very much.
It's amazing to think about where we're just before COVID and where we are now. A lot of pieces of balance, but um I've heard a lot of great things from the administrative offices about Mr. Pablo, Mr. Samuel's work. Um, we really appreciate it, looking forward to seeing where we're headed with it in the future, so thank you. So this brings us to agenda item F, which is the Board of Education Members and Student Representative Comments. Um, we'll start with responses to the comments made during um the public comments meeting period. Uh, so Mr. Vai, pardon, had several questions and Mr. Lee had some comments as well about the agenda item, uh, finance, I don't know. Tom Savage, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, President Lee. Um, I just want, you know, through you, I just needed some follow-up questions for, on their, um, um, once I get there, I'll, I'll act here. Uh, relating to Metfessel World, you commented about the, I guess, the description, how it's stated, estimated and what was it for? Um, that vendors are special legal counsel for the sexual abuse claims that we have outstanding. Um, the description is, is outlining the purpose of the PO, not necessary, necessary the reason for the payment. The payment is based on those inputs as actual.
Ending up the dollars and what they prepare estimates for, but it's good, I get it, thanks.
Correct, um, follow-up question relating to page two on bills and claims relating to inspection. I believe you're referring to J J D Electric, is that correct?
On page, oh, you see it, oh, page two, the, yes, J J D Electric, correct.
So that was our inspection um for the solar panels, is that all three buildings? That's the.
Was that it?
That's what he, he um performed because there was some, as, as we get the readings throughout, you know, monthly, um, he notices some, you know, productivity issues. So he recommended that we, you know, we, we do a thorough in, uh, inspection to see what needs to be replaced um based on those, you know, based on the solar panel. Um, those inspections, I could forward to you, enough tomorrow?
I don't need it, I thought it was a campus infra- electrical infrastructure, infrared testing of panel. I thought, what I thought it was, I didn't know what it was for, okay, I don't need it.
Okay, um, but we'll bring into the finance committee, I mean, some of the, the costs range from anywhere from six, seven thousand to eighteen thousand depending on the school. Um, but, you know, the solar panel, uh, life, there is, I believe, based on what he told us, at least five years of, you know, use, um, especially with, you know, the Ashrex that we were able to sell for another two and a half years.
I was, I was more concerned with the risks associated with an electrical system. I used to do, I, I used to manage large campuses and I used to do that stuff, I contracted, you know, and I was wondering if there was a report on that, I wanted to see what the condition of your transformers or your disperation system and all that, so I don't need to see that, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, relating to the state sources, you referenced thirty-one and thirty-nine, I believe that's the board secretary's report.
Correct.
Commenting budget estimate federal, um, that, I think that's, um, just globally, that is uh relating to our capital projects that's broken out as far as Rod Brand. Um, so it's split up into how the funding sources are based on, but that is relating to our local share that we're contributing capital reserve uh for the Rod Brand. It could also be a local share for the FEMA mitigation projects, it's, it's FEMA money. Um, so it's broken out by those categories. Um, some of those aren't realized yet, like I'll give you an example, the Rod Brand isn't realized yet. We're in the process of finalizing the grant agreement, so we got approved by the state. We're in the process of finalizing the grant agreement, so we got approved by the state to do the Roost at ACS. However, we were waiting to receive the grant agreement from the state to sign off on it. Once, once they sign off on it, there'll be a resolution to the full board accepting the grant agreement, which allows us to move forward with the bid, to, to move forward with that project. But globally, you'll notice relating to state, federal grants, some grants are able to be realized because, you know, we're expecting to get the full grant money based on, you know, state aid. Other grants, we can't realize until we actually spend the money. So some grants, you'll see that there's a grant award, which we budget, but as we're spending the money, the portion that we spend, we're realizing, and we true it up at the end of the year. Whatever we don't spend is not realized.
I was just considering we're five months into the year and I don't, there's nothing showing on, you know, as far as spending, but okay, I get.
But that one is capital, so that's, yeah. Relating to capital projects, planned versus spent. In my report today, I'll outline some of the, where we are with some of those projects, where we're going. So I'll provide that to you a little bit later. As far as the intent, the deadness for debt relating to our lease, leases, our bonds.
What's coming off?
There is one bond maturing that's, that actually matured this year. As well as we do have a, a schedule that I prepare for the budget. If you want, I could provide that to you.
Email.
Yep.
Thanks.
Relating to extraordinary aid, that was something that was brought up. I think you had a comment previously and Mr. LaPere commented on, you know, what districts could do for, you know, special ed costs rising. Extraordinary aid is, is a state resource that we're able to submit additional expenses relating to special ed, whether it's, you know, in district, out of district, that we could, if it's over a certain dollar amount, the state will actually allow us to submit it. Based on a calculation, they'll provide a, a percentage of that additional cost back to the district.
I remember. Thank you.
Yep. And that has not been realized because the grant award hasn't been completed yet. That's done usually in the spring. Just had a question, page thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. You referenced cleaning and maintenance. I wasn't sure.
The account numbers have changed. It's obviously cleaning and using, I said, it's two sixty-one, two sixty-two, two sixty-three, two seventy.
So the reason why, I thought you meant location, if it was on the, the bills list, that is based on the state's, all, all districts have to pretty much conform to some type of charter accounts, most districts.
Right.
If not all, follow those charter accounts established by the state. So those are in categories that are identified by the state. So two sixty-one is our maintenance, two sixty-two is custodial. So it's separated by what the purpose of that expenditure is for. Two sixty-three would be grounds. So they, we're required to, you know, itemize all our expenditures.
Okay. Let's just use the same explanation for all the different, lots of different accounts. I was just.
Which is similar. The charter accounts, I get it. It'll say, you know, services for custodial, services for required maintenance. Yeah, and then, and the two sixty-one has to align with our maintenance reserve.
Thank you.
I believe that was it.
Comments for the board or from our student representatives? Oh, I'm going to address Mr. Lee's comments regarding agenda item Finance, LQ. So Mr. Lee, I do appreciate you coming out to speak tonight. It is something that the public does not do often enough in terms of either support or concerns about any of the board agenda items. It is on the agenda tonight. It'll come up during the next portion of the agenda. I believe I've heard from some board members that they'd like to pull it for discussion. Typically, what happens is under consent agenda, everything is approved at once. When a board member wants to discuss an item, then it will get pulled and voted on separately. So there will be discussion and vote handled separately for that one. But I do appreciate you sharing your comments, all the board members did receive your email. And my response to you, they were copied on that. But we do appreciate you coming out and taking the opportunity to speak to us. So we have many people who would be supporting you as well, so thank you. Any other comments from our student representatives? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of consent agenda items. Can I have a motion and a second? Second, Mr. Depp. And do we have any?
Is that with LQ or without LQ?
Just about to get there.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So we have motion and a second. Do we have any items that anyone within the consent agenda that anyone would like to discuss? The school calendar? Any other items that anyone would like to pull for discussion?
Not for pulling for discussion, but I want to reduce myself from pulling for item LQ.
So that's Finance, I have no Q, which, for all of them?
If I can be more specific, pick item.
Okay. And I will make, I'd like to pull item LQ for discussion, the fifth item, one hundred percent one hundred percent. Are there any other ones that anyone would like to pull for discussion?
Question I just missed when I was reading the agenda earlier. It's a curiosity question. Under Education, the field tech request, I was curious for the Edwater State Bus Stop's. Is, is it familiar? I don't, I am.
Sure. If you look at, into the group, under career day attendees, we're having specific buses, kids participating for our career.
Oh, thank you so much. I didn't, okay. Got it, got it. Thank you.
Okay, so we are, we have items Education, KD, and Finance, item LQ being pulled for discussion. With those adjustments, motion and second to stand. Yes. Okay. Can I have a call please for all items, such as Education, KD, Finance, item LQ?
Ms. Troy?
Yes.
Dr. Mester?
Yep.
Ms. Raka?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Ms. DeSago?
Yes.
Ms. Wilds?
Yes.
Vice President Melman?
Yes.
And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on consent agenda items with the exclusion of Education, KD, and Finance, LQ.
So we have one for discussion, that, that education KD, the calendar?
Oh, yeah. I mostly wanted to pull it just to give anyone a chance to, for discussion because it hadn't been, you know, we hadn't discussed it in quite some time. And I had a one question about the three emergency days. If, like, where those were coming from, and I think if I'm reading the calendar correctly, if I'm reading the calendar correctly, June twenty-fifth is like the official last day of school. And now, since previous years, it was a tentative last day. So I want a clarification on that.
Where we have a question was, was when to choose a hard stop day?
Right. We had discussed it and I kind of wondered at that.
By contract, there's a hundred and eighty-two days of construction in the area. So the way the calendars were built in the past is the district builds a hundred and eighty-five days, factoring in the idea that you may have three possible snow days over the course of the year. And so they had three days until the end of the year. And then they remove, they back, they work backwards and then they get to a hundred and eighty-two. So the, so the twenty-fifth would be the ultimate last day of school. If we had utilized those three, include weather days, those three emergency days. So the last day of school could be the twenty-fifth. It could be, but it cannot be two, but if you don't make it the twenty-fifth, then you begin to run out of time because you have to get to a hundred and eighty-two. So it's one eighty-two plus three, you max out at June twenty-fifth. If you want to have a hard stop to the last day of school, you can make that hard stop be the twenty-fifth. And then just agree to have those other three incumbent days, those three days, if they're not used, dispersed through the course of the year, extending Memorial Day weekend, running a day here, a day there. That's how districts do that. Most districts, most districts have a hundred and eighty, so let's use that as an example. They go to, they have snow days built in. When they get past snow season, for the most part, they then give those days back inside that hundred and eighty-three day window. So if you want to have a hard stop to the last day of school, you could agree that June twenty-fifth is the last day of school and just have, have it be a graduation on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth is the last day of the students. I think that's how things have worked in the area in the past, you've done it that way. So you could do that, or you could stay at one eighty-two and then just work backwards. Does that make, that make sense? Does that help? And so that's, so a decision the board has. And what's interesting is, is that this calendar is not contingent upon that decision. Like, you want to have the hundred and eighty-five days built in because you want to have the three incumbent weather and emergency days built into your schedule. You don't want to go without that because if you go below one eighty-two, you're in violation of the contract. You go below one eighty, you're in violation of state law. So the decision really is, isn't really the school end of the twenty-fifth. Decision is, what do you want to do with those extra days if you have them? So that's pretty much where the board is.
And I think the, the board's one question is, is SAC available? Like, the camp, summer camp, when can they be available? Like, if we ended at twenty-fifth versus like the twenty-four for the twenty-third, is there a big gap? I think that's what we were following up with.
So they've always been pretty clear. They begin, regardless of when the school ends, they begin to follow them. That's where they've always been.
So it wouldn't be a whole week? It would be like half a week or whatever.
Yeah, I would assume that if we, if they knew we were finishing on the twenty-fifth, that they would be prepped for a third of the start. Now, I don't know what they do in, once again, I don't want to go outside my, my, my lane here because I know that, you know, July built in, there's July fourth and all that. I don't know when they start. I would assume based on their past behavior that the, that the first day for SAC would be the thirty. Now that being said, and I don't know the answer to this question, if they know that the twenty-fifth is the locked-in last day of school, then that would be, then maybe they would begin on the twenty-sixth. But I do want to caution the board that if we want to have a hundred and eighty-two days of school, and if there are no snow days, that the board has to understand that those days will be given back sometime else. It could be an extension of the Memorial Day weekend, it could be another, whatever it could be. But that's where we, one eighty-two is the number that is in the contract. So you have to, you'd have to have days off built in in there. So I just want to be very clear about that.
Those three days could be the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth of June, right? Or the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth of June.
Yeah, it could be. Yes.
That's what we do now.
That's, that's what we do now, yeah.
Right.
We read and then decide when class gets.
But it's not like we, we will be able to tell what is the case as soon as snow season's over, right? It's not like we wait until all the way till end of May or June and say we're backing out. Like, whether we're building it into Memorial Day weekend or anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Schools that, schools that adjust the calendar usually do it at their April meeting. By April, you're pretty much beyond that, and they kind of socialize what it's going to be. However, those days aren't necessarily for, we use the term emergency, the emergency days. Right? Because there's emergencies out there, right? And so it's not just snow days.
I see, I see.
Yeah, but by, by, when you get to April, though, what some schools do is that some schools will give back two of those days and they'll keep the third sort of in the bullpen in case of boiler breaks or something. Because remember, you have to go to a school a hundred and eighty days. What's interesting in our, in our calendar is because we're at one eighty-two, you actually have a five-day cushion to get to one eighty. So if we had some sort of crisis, something happened, the, the board could speak with the LEA, you could agree to only one hundred and eighty-one days construction, or even a hundred and eighty. So we have a lot more cushion built in there in most districts. We have five extra days built in there to get to the state requirement. I, I think the issue, Dr. Mester, is, is that it could be twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, but the board had discussed having a, a hard deadline set now for the purpose of camp preparation, things like that. I think that's pretty much where the conversation had been kind of circling around previously, but it could certainly be those three days.
So I think they would hold these now. Sorry. Yes. For those of us that like to speak. I can have a motion in a second for Education item, or sorry, is there any more discussion? Of the school calendar?
Well, I just.
Yes.
I notice we did give June nineteen off. I don't want to slow us down, but I just have to put it out there because it's, you know, a national holiday now. And what was the decision making of that?
Sure, we had discussed the idea of Friday, June twentieth being the recognition of Juneteenth. And the, the reason we stepped away from that was that we had a, the hard date fit in there of Diwali on November first. We wanted to recognize Diwali. So if you notice, November first is in addition with Diwali. And predicated upon when we would be in school depending on when we had, what days we would possibly, whether we were in the guarantee, we'd be in school on the twentieth. So as a result, we decided to move away from that date. Understand though, that our schools do recognize Juneteenth through school activities. It's not like we're at a recognition of it. We just felt that, that, that date bumping up against the end of the year with graduation, all that's going on. In theory, it could be a half day, it could be a full day. We decided to recognize Diwali, which fits on November first, a day after Halloween this year, and we will be in school on the twentieth.
Any other comments from the board on Education item KD? Seeing none, can I have a motion and a second, please? Motion, Mr. Depp. Second, Dr. Mester. May roll. Ms. Troy?
Yes.
Dr. Mester?
Yes.
Ms. Raka?
Yes.
Ms. DeZemka?
Yes.
Ms. DeSago?
Yes.
Ms. Wilds?
Yes.
Vice President Melman? President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on Education item KD.
Thank you. So we'll have discussion now on Finance, item LQ. Since I pulled up the discussion. All the board members received my response to Mr. Lee, this, this item was the subject of discussion. Just for the record, there's, there's no relationship with myself. We do share the same last name. And I wanted to bring, although all the board members, I should have seen, received my response, it's black copied. We wanted to share some information about, as soon as information was brought to light, I'll tell back up. At the last, at our last board meeting, we had approved a similar request for the month of January for use of the, of the facilities by the Southern One Church. At that time, we had done all of our due diligence to confirm that all the documents have been completed appropriately and the recommendation was made to the Board of Education, which we approved. The services have been held by the Southern One Church at the school district for the last, it's three weeks now without any incident. However, on Friday night, we received an email which shared some concerning information about members of that church. With that said, the request was that we pull and not approve that, that agenda item. However, it puts us in a little bit of a weird situation because we have, we have now an agreement that is month-to-month based on review with the board attorney. The school district really can't get into any long-term relationships for use of the facility, especially if the entity that we're working with does not have plans for, you know, where they're going to actually end up. And so with that, under that advice, that's why we're in this month-to-month situation. The agenda item that's on for tonight is for the next, for all the Sundays in the month of February. The request to pull that item and not approve it, even if we pull it for consideration at our next hearing, would put us in a bit of a, of a tough situation where the entity that we approved for last month would now on extremely short notice be out of place, all of their services. I think, I just wanted to share that in my, that any, any of the actions that the board takes around this entity and who they are, it's not an endorsement or support of actions or beliefs of any entity, entity that's renting or leasing facilities from the school. or leasing facilities from the school district. We are simply looking at it, at it as it's a business relationship where if the application and the applicant, if there's no issues with the information that they've provided, and it's financially beneficial for the district. It's a good thing for the district and that's what we're looking at here. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that in deliberation and discussion on this, um, that we're kind of keeping all that in mind. So, um, the information that was shared and provided to the board is definitely some concerning information provided there. Uh, it seems like it's personal nature. Uh, there's clearly documentation that proves various things happened or I don't know if I can say proves it, but clearly points to the fact that these things have occurred. Um, some things which I don't think are, are, are really, uh, I wouldn't support or condone myself. Um, but this is, um, between a private party and another private party. Um, and just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that as we go through and deliberate whether or not to vote on this. If anyone else has any questions or comments about it, this is the time to speak about it. Um, so please do so now.
I just have a couple of questions. There's no misrepresentation of the information that's been provided for the application, is that correct?
That's right.
I guess my second question is, are there any safety concerns? Given the information provided?
I think rather than looking at the safety concerns, really what it comes down to is what does our policy say or require? Uh, there may be grounds to deny the request. I don't, I don't believe myself that there are safety concerns. Um, Sunday is, you know, the lowest use day of the week. But looking at our policies, uh, looking at the application documents, the merits of the application, what was provided to us. Um, the information that was provided actually that we, the board received. I don't know that there's any legal way for us to obtain that information on our own. But without it being provided by the public, there's no way. People get sued all the time. Um, and there are, you know, charges brought against people all the time. I don't know that there's any conviction that, that's, that is out there, but, uh, in my mind, uh, it is one person in the organization. We, we actually don't have verification that that person is part of the organization. Because there were two people named. We know one is, is clearly, their names on the application. Um, and Vic, stop me from divulging too much information.
Oh, no. I'm going to give you some information on this.
Okay.
So, um, so you have, you have policy and regulation use of facility seventy-five ten, right? Um, generally speaking, your applications can just be approved by the business administrator without even going to the board. Um, there is something in there about, uh, it's going to be Sundays, Saturdays, and holidays that would require custodial coverage and the board approves those. So that falls into this. Um, your policy says that they're made available for, uh, the facilities are made available for the community so long as doesn't interfere with the educational and co-curricular programs of the district, right? That's pretty much the limitation that your policy sets forth as to when you're going to, uh, potentially deny an application. There is priority use, it's spelled out in the policies and the regulations. There's different classes of, uh, applicants, and if there is a, like a conflict between two applicants, the, your, your time breaker, for lack of a better word, is first come, first served, right? Uh, that's, that's the way that that works. Um, your vetting process, as set forth in your policy and regulations, is pretty much limited to that they have the appropriate insurance verification, that they have P D on the appropriate insurance. Um, and checking the calendar, right? And obviously you need to make sure that they're able to make payment, but, but that's pretty much it. Um, when it comes to, so there's insurance, so it's the extent that there's any potential safety concerns or things like that. Um, I mean, you know, property damage or people getting injured, uh, just like any organization. We have, you know, we have rec sports that are here all the time. Uh, kids getting injured in rec sports, we all know that, I've been there for them. Um, so that's why we require them to have insurance. This way we're not the ones that are, and they're demoralized as well. So when it comes to religious organizations, there's a little bit of an additional piece there. Um, there's a case from seventy-six or seventy-eight. Uh, it was Resnick versus, I can't remember the board of, it's on the board of ed. And, uh, what that New Jersey Supreme Court case said was that when it comes to religious organizations, you can't, this is a public school, cannot endorse a religion, right? Um, so there is a provision though that says that, uh, you can make the school available for, uh, religious use so long as we're not, um, essentially giving the, the religious organization any kind of a benefit, right? So they would have to reimburse the board one hundred percent of all costs expended. That's why you see that, uh, this particular church is paying thirty-two hundred dollars for custodial coverage. It's a hundred dollars an hour for eight hours a day, four days. And they're also paying, um, fifty-four hundred dollars for, uh, use. That's based upon your fee schedule, eight hundred dollars per day for the gym, ninety dollars a day for classrooms. It's five classrooms, so, um, that's thirteen fifty a weekend times four, gets you to the fifty-four hundred. So that's, that's fine. That's permitted and required. Um, it's, if it's used for religious services, um, then that use essentially has to be temporary in nature, right? And Resnick, there was a church, I can't remember candidly if they had a problem with their church or they were just building a new church, so they didn't have the old one anymore. But they needed to use, they needed to find someplace to host their services. And one of those places was the board of ed. Uh, and that took her case. So they were able to do that. It was temporary nature. It can't be like a permanent thing. And so that's why it's being done, you know, on a month-to-month basis. Um, but that's, those are basically the issues that, that you have. Um, and, um, you know, absent some showing that it doesn't, that it would interfere with the educational and co-curricular programs. I mean, where I would caution the board about is making a decision based upon individuals that may be associated with it. We don't know the individuals that are associated with every single use of facilities application that we do. Um, and there's a potential first amendment issue that comes up, right? Whether we'd be denying it based upon first amendment issues. So, um, absent some showing that there's a violation of the policy, as it's currently written, right? Then I would, I would advise to approve it. Um, having said that, that policy could change. I mean, if that policy does change, we have to look at it from a legal standpoint to see whether or not those changes to the policy are appropriate. But, you know, as of right now, there's nothing specific that would give rise to deny the application. Without more, I'm sorry.
Just have a follow-up question, not specific to this particular month, but, uh, you could see approving this month-to-month for quite some period of time, yeah, right? At which point, like, when does that reach kind of, um, yeah, permanent, long-term?
I agree. That, and that's something that would have to be reviewed. I mean, and there's not, I would say there's not a hard and fast, I mean, in Resnick, not to say that this is, like that they said that this is okay, but in Resnick, I think it was three or four years. Uh, but that was a decision from nineteen seventy-eight, whatever it is. We don't know that a similar case would be decided the same exact way today. Um, so the emphasis is on the temporary nature. And, um, and, and, you know, right now, we don't know how temporary that is intended to be. Uh, but something, uh, something that is several months, I, I don't see that being an issue. Something that would be an application saying, we'd like to use your facilities for the next four years, I think that's going to be a problem. That doesn't sound too temporary. But it depends. I mean, also, I think there could be factors. If they say we're building a church, you know, here we are. And, um, it was supposed to be open in November. Now they told us we're going to have to wait until, uh, March. Okay, that's, you know, a legitimate extension, but, you know, that, that, those are all the factors. It becomes very fact-sensitive. Uh, so as of right now, it appears that month-to-month is okay, but, you know, there could be a point in time in which it's not okay. So we'll have to look at that.
So I just have one question. So if everything's fine with the application, are we obligated to, uh, write this out to any organization?
So basically, since you, you kind of have what I would characterize as, um, like a limited open public forum in a sense, right? I mean, it's not really a public forum in the sense that we have, um, public comment or what have you. But you, you're making the facilities available to the public for their use. What we really can't do is restrict it based upon content, right? Unless that content was something that was, um, you know, like obscenity or, you know, pornography or something like, you know, something that is pretty obvious that is not compatible with the use of the school. Uh, other than that, um, you know, you run the risk of a potential problem if you rent it out to one group and then deny a similarly situated group or, you know, so forth and so on, right? Um, so that's the potential issue that you have.
If I could come and delay, if I could please correct me as we, as we talk about this. These are, these are schools, but they're also their public buildings.
Correct.
And the public has access to the buildings. And provided the public, members of the public meet certain criteria, they have the right to apply for access to the buildings. Like they're schools and the board operates the schools, but in reality, these are still taxpayer-funded institutions that they have access to. There are upper limits to what we would say yes or no to, for example, like the, the rough rule that, that we use is it can't, it can't disrupt the orderly operation of the district, right? We would not be obligated to rent it out to a, a, a film studio that wanted to film a, a, a slash movie inside the school, right? We'd say that that runs contrary to who we are as a district. Um, but other than that, though, these are public building, public institutions that the public has access and right to.
And, and the one thing I would say is like, although I don't know of any school districts that do this, theoretically, you could say the buildings are never available for public use other than the schools, right? I mean, I don't, we represent probably fifty, sixty school districts. I don't know any districts that do that. But in theory, you could do that. But that's, I mean, typically, most residents expect that there's some level of usage, whether it's Boy Scouts or whatever it may be. I mean, that's pretty common, rec department, so forth and so on.
Vic, so then you're saying that in, along the lines of it's either reject all or reject none?
Broadly speaking, yes. I mean, there could, yeah, there could be individual circumstances where you could say, well, we're not accepting this, but we'll accept other things.
I guess that's my question. Are there other school districts that have maybe policies that are a little bit more restrictive? In terms of, I don't even know how to phrase it. I just feel like in some sense, right, we have like a code of conduct for like our school community. So like.
I'd have to take a look.
And I'm not saying this case applies. I'm just saying like, I would feel uncomfortable if someone applied and maybe they weren't doing something as explicit as pornography, but still whatever. Maybe like a hateful organization. Yeah, whatever hateful organization it was had, just using it for a meeting, like, it just feels, it feels, doesn't feel right. So like, it concerns me that we have to like say yes to everybody in some way.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm not saying not even for just this case, like, I'm just saying in general, it's the, the fact that it is like.
Yeah, I think you could take a look at that and see what the appropriate restrictions might be.
Yeah.
Um, as we review that policy. And I'll think about, I mean, my guess is if you look at, I mean, there's a couple of different, I mean, some districts have their own policies that they craft themselves, but for the most part, they either get policies from New Jersey School Board Association or Strauss Hasmeier, which is another company. A lot of districts use Strauss Hasmeier. It's probably sixty to seventy percent is my guess. Um, what I would also guess is that if you look at the district, at all these districts' policies that use Strauss Hasmeier, probably very little variation in what's in there. There are some variations, you know, they have like different classes of, um, people to whom you allow to use the facilities. But other than that, they, you know, they, they all remain generally the same. But we can certainly take a look and see whether or not there's, like, what the limits of the restrictions could be, right? If the board wants to have more, you know, control over that. Um, you know, within the legal, uh, within the legally permissible, um, uses.
Just, just one follow-up. Can we put in a policy like a term limit? We talked about like it can't be more than three months or six months.
Uh, I think you could. I think that, I mean, it's because that would be like neutral. It would be neutral not only on its face, but also on its application.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, there are some, I mean, right, we've seen some, um, organizations that might put something in a policy that's facially neutral, but it has a discriminatory impact, right? So we'd have to be careful about that. But if we did something that was facially neutral and, and the impact was very neutral as well, yeah, that would be fine. That's something to, to review as to whether or not we'd want to do that.
But then that was by all.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It may have implications of other associations that can use the school.
Yes. I just don't want something to go on indefinite or four years. And maybe have like three months and then like you could reapply in two months or something, not like a ban people like.
When's the last time you reviewed that policy?
I can, let me check. I can tell you.
Yep.
Because I just had it open. Um, it looks like the regulation was last reviewed February of twenty-twenty. See the policy. Oh, you did, oh.
Me, yeah.
The policy looks like we haven't reviewed it since June of fifteen. Right? But the regu- regulations were, uh, twenty-twenty. Someone else have any com- comments? Okay.
And one of my primary or a couple of my primary concerns with this is really that, um, we've gone through our appropriate process for what we need to do to approve the use of this, of the facilities. Um, this is new information. It is new information. We just received it on Friday night. We had discussions over the weekend and, um, kind of meeting on Monday with Vic and some of the administrators. And again, the agenda minute before us tonight is, is only for the use of the facilities for the month of February. Um, so what I'm hearing tonight is that maybe we need a review of our policies. Um, comparison to, uh, potentially also comparison to other districts' policies to see how stringent or what types of other criteria are included. I would, um, those are definitely things that I would support in terms of, of the relation to this specific item on the agenda for tonight. Uh, for us to take a look at and consider for, for future meetings. Um, and again, with information being so new, we just received it on Friday night. And I think this will give us an opportunity, um, if this were to be approved, um, to look at over the next, until the next meeting, uh, the details of what's in that information. So, um, yes.
And just a point of clarification too, and, and sponsors, please correct me on this. We do not have a March application in front of a ship. So I'll point that out. Like they, they've, they've approved February, they've applied for that, but there's nothing passed. So we show March very well, may, they may find a different public accommodation, they may not be reapplying. I don't know the answer to that question. But right now, we are not, there's nothing at our level in which a March application is being considered. Thank you for that clarification.
Ms. Lee, I guess, um, and, and basically, I don't, I don't know the parties and so forth, just privy to the same information that you shared with us. I'm just concerned about the timeframe. Um, and that if we have made some kind of a commitment already, granted, we still have to approve it, but I am concerned about the timeframe and, uh, we're leaning towards thinking that if we could, uh, prove February, that would kind of buy us the time to do any other, uh, research we feel we'd like to. And I'd also like to remind the public that, um, even if we do make a change to our policy, we need one meeting to approve it and a second meeting, um, for a second reading. That's how policies are approved. So we, we would still need, uh, February, March, um, even if we acted quickly. Thanks.
Okay, that's the next one point. Ready to change our policies. So does anyone else have any other comments on this matter? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion at second for, uh, finance item LQ? Motion. Doctor Easter, a motion in a second? As well. Can we have a roll call?
So just to confirm, Ms. Troy, you're abstaining on?
I'm refusing myself. Yes.
Uh, Doctor Myster?
Yes.
Ms. Raca?
Yes.
Ms. Zentka?
I'm also abstaining on my own. I think I need more time to look into this.
Ms. Sago?
Yes.
Ms. Wilds?
Yes.
Vice President Melman?
Um, no for line item five.
President Lee?
Yes.
So just to, um, confirm, Mr. Libera?
Vic Harris.
Vic Harris?
Yeah, five of one. Majority of those present.
Perfect. Motion carries.
Thank you. Just so for the members of the public that are here, the motion for the agenda item for Seton Church was approved. However, there in the discussion, we will be reviewing policy items and reviewing the application process for report. Thank you. That brings us to administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank fellow board of education, fellow members of the public, those at home, hello. I have several items just to update the community with as we move into January. This coming Friday is the rescheduled ACS Global Feast being hosted over at LMS. We want to appreciate that the Global Feast Organizing Committee changed from last Friday to this Friday due to weather, so thank you for that. On the ACS note, I had the chance to attend some of their campfires, which is a character education weekly assembly. Had a chance to stop in last week. Middle school sports kicked off this week, I believe. We had a court of girls basketball game, volleyball, boys, boys' festival. And then we have the wrestling meet over at LMS today. So those of you paying attention, we are over just on halfway through the school year. We're on the, the cusp of the 100 day of school, it was around February, we get there, around, around Valentine's Day, but we're almost, we're just on halfway through the school year. If our high school representatives could confirm, this Friday, I believe, is the end of the second marking period, I believe, I believe. There, I'm getting blank stares, maybe I'm wrong. We're already, oh, we've upgraded due this Friday. Thank you, I didn't do it last Friday, upgraded due this Friday. We have a great, if you look at our district webpage, landeschools.org, there's a great photo there of our gym with our brand new wrestling lane being used. Thank you, Leoni Sports Boosters, the wrestling lane, we're grateful for that. Our ski club had a successful experience, new ski club, new club, which students went, had a great time. There was no snow anywhere except Mountain Creek, so good job Mountain Creek. This was the, just to point out for those of you who struggle with the winter, that yesterday the sun set after five o'clock for the first time yesterday, 5:01 PM. It does not set before five o'clock until November, so forget your seasonal affective disorder. Congratulations to our high school, it's been a midterm, very successful midterm week. We've had a variety of budget meetings and district getting ready for next year. Mr. Hop, Mr. Holak, who's one of our music educators at LMS, crunched some numbers. We had set concert season LMS. He figured out that 33% of middle school students are involved in the musical program in one way or the other. One out of every three children is involved, very, very high number. Good to see there. I want to thank Mr. Samuel Westley for their presentations tonight. I want to mention that we received word today from Congressman Gottheimer's office. Congressman Gottheimer is going to be paying a visit to the district. He's coming on February 12th in the morning. He's going to be involved in making some Valentine's Day cards for some of our students here, which are then delivered to the veterans and perhaps congratulations to our students here, welcome to Congressman Gottheimer. And on a more technical note, we have been discussing, and I know that Jordan Ziegler, who is our BRLA is on, is here tonight, the, the reinstitutional, the planters outside ACS. We moved those planters for the redevelopment project, we want to get those planters back in. Jordan has been great speaking with me in regards to when they can go back, how will they be hauled to the ground? Where will they go? I want to thank the borough because the borough engineer's been involved, we're taking a look at the policy that was written. What's interesting for the board to know on this, and this Mr. appears here for a couple of minutes, is that we have an interesting Venn diagram where we have district purchased items being used on borough owned property. So there's that little intersection of our world and their world, and what does that look like? And so we're working on the, the resolutions that are necessary, things like that. But we do want to get those planters back there. We know there's a very strong safety measure we have out there. We're working through the process to get them back. We also don't want to damage the new concrete that was put out there through sidewalk. So we're working on that, and that is all from me. So thanks, everybody, and have a great night.
Mr. Thomas Evans?
Thank you, President Lake. So I just have two, three items to discuss. The first one, Mr. Lee from New Jersey School Boards Association kind of touched base on it. The financial disclosure statements went out this week to all the board members and administrators. So you should have received an email. Those are due April 30th, with the exception of Dr. Meesters. That's 90 days, which is, she indicated is the new, new change. The next item, our independent auditors have been, the past couple of weeks, working on the fieldwork for the 2223 audit, per discussion with the audit manager. They're at the tail end of the audit fieldwork. Roughly estimated completion date is around, you know, roughly two weeks out before we get a report, exit conference, and present it to the board for accepting it. Relating to the caporal projects update, which Arthur, you know, kind of asked about, so I just would like to go over certain projects and the status. I'm speaking to the architect. Leonia High School has numerous projects that are pending. The first one is the FEMA mitigation project. FEMA mitigation relating to the retaining wall, as well as cernin grading and exterior door replacement. Right now, it's at, it's in the steps of the topography survey, which just got completed. Currently, they're working on, the architect is working on the design for the bid, which he's predicting that he should be able to provide to the district and send it out for advertising sometime in February, mid to late February. Once we see where the costs are, then we'll present it to the board for awarding event. The next item is exterior interior door replacement at the high school. That's through Ida, what got damaged relating to our insurance claim. The drawings are complete, the plans are being sent to the insurance carrier because as, as a result of insurance, they want to kind of sign off on what, what's in the plans, what they're going to reimburse the district for, so that's, that's pending their approval. And then the next step is going out to bid. The next item is electrical secondary replacement at the high school. That's also going through insurance that was based on an Ida, related to Ida. The drawings are also complete and that's also being sent to the insurance carrier to sign off on moving forward with going out to bid. The let, the next piece at the high school is the media center approval, which kind of trickled from the prior year. We're at the step where the LRFP has been updated, including, you know, the reconfiguration of the old media center and the new media center area. The state has requested some additional information to be sent over. So we're in the process of providing that additional information, mainly relating to the demographic study. The drawings and educational specs have been revised and included in the new, in the new media center layout, and that will be also sent over to the state for approval. The last item for the high school is the conversion of staff toilet, making it ADA compliant, based on our current needs projected for next year. The drawings are underway and that's planning to go out to bid sometime in late February, early March. Relating to the middle school, we have one pending project currently, that's the FEMA mitigation project. That's for removal of the canopy, grading and new canopy by the playground area outside the cafeteria. That's also, the topography survey has been completed and that's also in the design. The architect is working on the design and that's going out to bid late February. Relating to Anasie Scott, there's two projects that are pending. The exterior door replacement, that was part of, that's one of the projects that the district is fully funding. That was one of the projects that we submitted to for rod grant, we did not get approved. So we're moving forward based on, that's a priority as far as security. That's at, the drawings are complete and that's going out to bid shortly, advertising for bid. The last piece is the, the last item is the roof replacement, that's a rod grant. That related to, Arthur, your question as far as state, federal, you know, that's, that's the state piece for the grant. We're waiting for, to get the executed grant agreement completed. The state just sent that over, I want to say last Friday, so we just need to fill that out. That information out, once the state signs off on it, then we could move forward with the bid, awarding the contract and, and starting the work. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And that brings us to agenda item J, committee reports, and start, starting with our two representatives.
It's not this weekend, our split teams went on the mock, the Bergen weekend of champions. Some of our rivals were at Iris Kim, Rebecca John, matching Vincent Kim, both multiple school records and county records at this meet alone. During the time from this meeting to last meeting, we had the holiday market, which was a big success. A lot of our districts and Leontian Edgewater small businesses came and supported it. And we saw a very good turnout and it was just a nice day overall.
Just from feedback from both students and parents, I've, I've heard at least a lot of great feedback and positive feedback from females for the feminine products that was placed in the bathrooms for, obviously, that's free and accessible to all females, so that's really great. And also the new film, I would call it, on the doors of the high school. That's also been a really great security measure to have and I can build it more protected every morning. I know it's something really small, but I really like that, I appreciate that. And I do have a question on page six of the agenda. We have district goals and then the board of education goals. Are there specific goals for both ACS, LMS and LHS as well as these schools? Just, that's just my question.
Yeah, so these, our goals that we have are on our professional development plans. Those goals, they, they align, they're similar in the scope of these district goals, but they're specific. So we have a district PDP, call it professional development plan, and then we have a school PDP. So each school has their own PDP and they match the district goals, but really specific to that building. So, and those are, they were approved back in August, so they're public documents, but I'm just curious, that's all.
Thank you.
Just a follow up for Dr. Gates. We unfortunately lost our mock trial round for today. Fine, I'm actually the mock trial coach with Mr. Cullen, so I couldn't be there because I'm here, but we have another round coming on Thursday, so let's keep roaring lines.
Thank you. And then moving on to our committee reports, I know it's very early in the year. I don't suspect that any of the committees have run through the process for practice. So our first committee is the Board of Practice and Principles, chaired by Mr. Melman.
Yep, we are starting this committee, a new committee, and we're meeting next week on January 31st.
Next committee is Buildings and Grounds, chaired by Mr. Zepka.
Yeah, so we haven't met yet, but we'll pick dates in the near future.
Next committee is Education, it's chaired by Ms. Thompson, but she is not here tonight, I believe they have not met yet. Okay, so Education Committee is meeting next Friday. And the next committee is Finance and Planning, I am chair of that committee. We are working on setting a meeting, it'll be either Tuesdays or Thursdays, and the week before the board event meeting and two times in March and May. So for those committee members, thank them very much in advance for all of your work. And the next committee, and certainly not the least, is our Policy Committee, Mr. Sago.
Yeah, we haven't met yet, but we have worked on a meeting cadence in terms of meeting. We'll definitely be meeting in advance of the next board meeting. I've also had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Gates to share some of the better understanding of the roles, the policies process, so that would be a seamless transition. And of course, based on today's discussion, we clearly have some agenda items that are in the building.
Thank you very much. Thank you to our super reps for the reports. So that brings us to item N, do business. A motion, a second for new business.
Motion?
Smollett? Second, Ms. Zepka. Any items for discussion other than item A? Seeing none, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Troy?
Yes.
Dr. Meester?
Yes.
Ms. Rockau?
Yes.
Mrs. Zepka?
Yes.
Mr. Sago?
Yes.
Ms. Wilds?
Yes.
Ms. Mel, Vice President Melman?
Yes.
President Lake?
Yes.
Motion carries on new business.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to agenda O, public comment. This, this portion of the meeting is for public comment on any non-agenda items pertaining to the Leonia Public School District. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, based on words, state your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes to discuss your comments or questions. You want to move on? Arthur?
Arthur said 125 roll these briefly. Personally, I can't hear everybody, even on the microphones there, so in particular, Kim's got a soft voice. It didn't pick up a lot and actually Steve, when I was in front of you, it didn't pick up. Another old man with a hard of hearing, it didn't seem like it was even handled by anybody else, it seemed to pick up pretty well, so I just wanted to mention that. Also, I'm not sure if it's appropriate or not, but when you have a presentation like you did on the tech in particular, you have to comment from the board. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to ask the public, because I have a lot of questions. Not to bolster questions I want to answer and then want to object, but if it's appropriate, you might want to offer public comment after the board. If it's not appropriate, then that's okay too. And I think that is it, except I'd like to hear from the running sports, from the school representatives that we didn't pick off, I, I mean, I think the girls' sports, which I'm particularly interested in, if there are any wins, hard losses or anything like that.
Thank you. Arthur, excellent suggestion, 100% my fault for not offering to the public. I don't think there's any hard and set fast rules in terms of opportunity for the public to comment, but if you can put your comments to either email or if you don't mind calling to Dr. Gates, I would absolutely love to answer those questions for you, I apologize.
Okay.
And we'll make sure to do that moving forward.
I can share the girls', the LMS basketball team, they won their first game against Harrison.
Against who?
Harrison.
Oh, I thought you said Emerson.
No, Harrison.
No, the girls' varsity basketball team did defeat Emerson. And they actually did it twice, they did it once here and they did it also as part of the Walter Holiday tournament, so they ended up winning.
But nobody's keeping track of that.
I'll tell you, a pet peeve of mine goes 30 years ago or 25 years ago, I know I was attending board meetings, the board always used to make, not the board, the schools would make public announce, I'm sorry for interjecting, public announcements at school about the boys' sports, how they did. And I've always asked my daughters, how, you know, how would, how did they announce it? And they said, they didn't daddy, they didn't daddy, they never, they never announced the girls' sports, how they did. So I raised two daughters, I don't have any boys, so I, I am always interested in how the, the girl side.
Mentioned about the girls' swim team, right?
So I'm, I'm not a swimmer, I know everybody is a swimmer, but we just want to preface that we like to bring a lot of good news to the board of education. And if we don't talk about the girls' basketball team, you probably don't want to talk about the girls' basketball team. So let's talk about the girls' swimming team and they did great, so that's what we do to you guys.
Leoni has had good swim teams for years, especially the girls, but the swim team, they're good.
And, and our bowling team, our bowling team does very well as well. They're very good. And they just beat, was it, I don't know, you got in the school, but I know they have a team or meet, whatever you call them, I don't know, bowling meets against Boca Bell. So that was to either today or tomorrow, but we'll keep you updated.
I'm, I'm getting all the emails now, so I'm reading all of your, all of your, and I, I'm sharing your agony with all the ice and snow and the delays, I know you really like that stuff, but I, I am getting all that stuff and every time I read it, I think of you.
Thank you, Arthur, I appreciate that. I do want to point out that for the, for the bowling team, which has a meet on, a match on Tuesday, it's at Parkway Lanes in Elwood Park. I put it in Elwood Park. It is, not only that, but also the Adalina Darnett. You just showed that, so feel free to support the bowling team.
Arthur, just as I forgot to give the public a kind of a chance to comment, I skipped right past opening the rest of the public comment period. We went to board comment, so I want to make sure that if there's anyone else in the public that wishes to speak, please come up to the podium now. We went to board comments, so I want to make sure that if there's anyone else in the public that wishes to speak, please come up to the podium now and, um, provide any comment. School district related information.
Help if I turn it on.
Uh, Jordan Ziegler, two oh one, Percy Street. Uh, I just want to introduce myself. I'm one of the newest council members at your Board of Education liaison. Since it is already ten o'clock, I'm going to be quiet now and go back to my seat. First, I want to introduce myself and looking forward to working with all of you. If you need to reach out to me, Dr. Gates has my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone's actually showing up for board of education.
Um, is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on any school, school-related items? Okay, seeing none, um, that would bring us to the official board comment section. Any members from the board or from our student representative have any other comments pertaining to the school district? Seeing none. Um, do we have, do we need to go to those? Yeah, okay. Okay, so this next portion of the meeting is item Q on the agenda. It's closed session, so although, um, we will be coming back from closed session to vote on item R and then to go into adjournment. This time at the meeting, the duty is to ask the public to leave the meeting. And for those that are watching on YouTube, um, it's a pink, um, about fifty minutes, twenty minute pause and broadcast with, uh, which I will look back on and now.
Is that news?
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
She made fit badly, no relation. That's a fluid, that was like string comedy, right in there.
Maybe he remembers that next time.
That's like for Die Hard, right? You remember that? John, stage Johnson, especially Johnson.
Time is now ten, ten twenty, we are, we are back in public session. Can I have a motion and a second for agenda item R, concession approval personnel items? Dr. Melman and a second?
Second.
Uh, Dr. Meester? And Mrs. Roll.
Ms. Troy?
Yes.
Dr. Meester?
Yes.
Ms. Rockout?
Yes.
Mrs. Zepka?
Yes.
Mrs. Sago?
Yes.
Ms. Wilds?
Yes.
Vice President Melman?
Yes.
And President Lake?
Yes.
Motion carries on personnel items.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for adjournment? Dr. Meester, second, all favor? May you oppose our exemptions? Very much we are.